Good evening. Thank you so much all for being here this evening for Tuesday, June 7th Louisville City Council Meeting. I am Mayor Ashley Stolzmann and this meeting is being held electronically and in person and is being recorded. For folks who are here in person, we have sign up cards if you would like to comment and are in the room. We are at fire capacity in the room and so there are folks allowed in the overflow areas until they reach fire capacity. But your best bet to publicly comment if you're not in the room right now is to log on online and there's an online option where we can take people that way too. You'll be able to dial in or come in through a link electronically and then you can raise your hand to speak by clicking the raise hand button at the bottom of your panel. So we look forward to hearing from everyone this evening and I'll ask our city clerk for a roll call. Mayor Stolzmann?
Here.
Mayor Protem Maloney?
Here.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Here.
Councilmember Fahy?
Here.
Councilmember Lay?
Here.
Councilmember Most?
Here.
Thank you everyone, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Could I please get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, there's a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you everyone, the motion carries. And that takes us to our regular business this evening. Our first item of regular business is a proclamation observing Juneteenth National Independence Day. So I will read the proclamation and then ask council member for a motion to approve our proclamation this evening. So, tonight we are making a proclamation observing Juneteenth National Independence Day. Juneteenth is, whereas Juneteenth is the oldest celebration of emancipation of enslaved African Americans and is so named after the events that took place on June 19th, 1865 in Galveston, Texas. And whereas, on June 19th, 1865, Union soldiers led by Major General Gordon Granger arrived in Galveston, Texas with the news that the Civil War had ended and that enslaved were free. And whereas, news of the end of slavery did not reach frontier areas of the United States for more than two years after President Lincoln's Emancipation Proclamation of January 1st, 1863, and the months after the conclusion of the Civil War. And whereas, Juneteenth is an example of America's commitment to liberty and June 19th is celebrated and recognizes the historical significance of the end of chattel slavery in the United States. And whereas, many continue the tradition of celebrating Juneteenth as inspiration and encouragement for future generations. And for more than 155 years, Juneteenth Day celebrations have been held to honor African Americans' freedom while encouraging self-development and respect for all cultures. And whereas, the faith and strength of character demonstrated by former enslaved African Americans remains an example for all people of the United States regardless of background, religion, or race. And whereas, on June 17th, 2021, President Joseph R. Biden signed the Juneteenth National Independence Day Act which officially recognized Juneteenth of observance and making June 19th a federal holiday. And whereas, on May 2nd, 2022, Colorado Governor Jared Polis signed a bill establishing Juneteenth as an official Colorado state holiday. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Louisville, in the city of Louisville, that we recognize the historical significance of Juneteenth, support the continued celebration of Juneteenth to provide an opportunity for the people of the city of Louisville to learn more about the past, to better understand the experiences that have shaped the nation, and to encourage the people of the city of Louisville to observe Juneteenth Day with appropriate ceremonies, activities, and programs. And the history of the, and the plight of the African Americans and all that was endured during chattel slavery, Reconstruction, Jim Crow, and the Civil Rights Movement is an example of pure resilience. And the city of Louisville recognizes, adopts, and proclaims this proclamation to underscore the freedom with the dignity of every human being. As a government body, we oppose and reject any form of oppression and pledge to support our residents and the local entities working to achieve equality and to protect human rights. Is there a motion to approve our proclamation? There's a motion from Councilmember Lay, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second from everyone? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you everyone, the motion carries. Look forward to seeing you all at Community Park for the flag raising. And I do, I really appreciate the joy and honor and it is so wonderful, but I'm just going to encourage everyone and please ask that for the, for the entire public hearing, we really need everyone to be respectful and quiet because people have different perspectives and ideas. And we want to make sure that we have an inclusive environment where anyone feels comfortable coming to the podium to give us their perspective. And so if for the rest of the hearing, even if you really agree with something someone says, if everybody could just keep your emotions to yourself, we can make sure everyone feels welcome and comfortable coming to the podium. Thank you so much. And that takes us to our next order of business this evening, which is gun violence prevention ordinances. And I am going to open the public hearing and ask if there are any disclosures. Seeing none, and just so everyone knows, Mayor Protem Maloney, you can see him up on the screen right here, and I can see him here on my screen. So when I'm looking down like this, I'm just making sure that we're including everybody in this hybrid mode. So I will read the ordinance titles that will be taking up this evening and we're going to be hearing these. We'll have a brief staff presentation and then we'll have public comment. People will have two minutes to tell us what they'd like to tell us. And we'll have council comments after that and then one more round of public comment before we close the public hearing and take action tonight. So just a reminder again, if, when people do have those public comment periods, people will have two minutes to tell us what they'd like to tell us. I'll call people up who have signed up and people online can raise their hand using the raise hand icon and then you'll just need to tell us your name and the city that you live in and then whatever you'd like to tell us. And so with that, I'm going to read some ordinance titles and we're taking these all up one after another. So the first measure is ordinance number 1831, series 2022, an ordinance amending Title 9, Article 8 of the Louisville Municipal Code banning the sale and possession of assault weapons, large-capacity magazines, and rapid-fire trigger activators, and establishing a minimum age to possess firearms. This is our second reading and the public hearing is advertised in the Daily Camera on 5/22/2022. And then ordinance number 1832, series 2022, an ordinance amending Title 9, Article 8 of the Louisville Municipal Code prohibiting the carrying of firearms in certain public places. This is our second reading and public hearing as advertised in the Daily Camera on 5/22/2022. And then we'll be taking up ordinance number 1833, series 2022, an ordinance amending Title 9, Article 8 of the Louisville Municipal Code prohibiting the open carrying of firearms in public places. This is our second reading and public hearing is advertised in the Daily Camera on 5/22/2022, followed by ordinance number 1834, series 2022, an ordinance amending Title 9, Article 8 of the Louisville Municipal Code to require that all firearms dealers post signs at all locations where firearms transfers are taking place. This is our second reading and public hearing is advertised in the Daily Camera on 5/22/2022, followed by ordinance number 1835, series 2022, an ordinance amending the Title 9, Article 8 of the Louisville Municipal Code to require a waiting period prior to the sale of firearms. This is our second reading and public hearing is advertised in the Daily Camera on 5/22/2022, followed by ordinance number 1836, series 2022, an ordinance amending Title 9, Article 8 of the Louisville Municipal Code to regulate the possession of unfinished frames and receivers and unserialized firearms. This is our second reading and public hearing as advertised in the Daily Camera on 5/22/2022. And so with that, I will turn it over to our city attorney Kathleen Kelly to give us a very brief overview of the ordinances.
Thank you Mayor. Councilmembers, yes, I will be brief out of respect for all the many people, the many people who wish to speak on this, these ordinances tonight. During the 2021 legislative session, the Colorado General Assembly repealed the local preemption on regulation of firearms. So local governments such as the city of Louisville may now enact and enforce local ordinances governing firearms that are more restrictive than state law. The six ordinances that are proposed for your consideration tonight on second reading will do many things. I won't run through the list since it's all contained in the titles that the mayor just read, but we've been working on these ordinances in conjunction with several other nearby municipalities so that all of us working together could take a collective effort to establish some uniform regulations throughout the area. There are several second reading amendments that are noted in the ordinance for your review this evening. Many of those are in the nature of cleanup or clarification, but there are some substantive provisions that I wanted to bring your attention to. So some of those substantive second reading amendments include the prohibition of firearm sales to minors, which is included in ordinance number 1831. We have changed the required signage that will appear to be both available in English and in Spanish and to be posted in English and in Spanish, which is in keeping with the city's efforts regarding diversity and inclusion. An exception has been added to section 9.84.010, which is having to do with possession and sale of illegal weapons. And that exception reflects the exception in state law for military and law enforcement procurement. And that was a revision that was requested by the National Shooting Sports Foundation and we did incorporate that into the ordinance. The ordinance now recognizes that some institutions may explicitly permit possession of firearms within their buildings. And we have included grocery stores as a sensitive area where possession of firearms is prohibited without such explicit permission. One question that's come up is schools are not included among the list of those areas that are deemed sensitive areas where possession of firearms are prohibited. And that is because state law already prohibits that. So with that, I am available throughout the evening should you have any questions.
Thank you very much for that presentation. And next we'll turn it over to Allison Anderman. Allison has provided some background expertise and can answer questions for council. And Allison, if you want to introduce yourself and your organization and then give a brief presentation as well.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Allison Anderman, Senior Counsel and Director of Local Policy at Giffords Law Center to Prevent Gun Violence. First and foremost, I want to thank you Mayor Stolzmann and the council for your courage to act on this issue. You will undoubtedly hear a lot of strong and in some cases threatening testimony tonight. People who are very extreme on guns tend to be equally aggressive in their rhetoric and it can be intimidating when people tell you that you're going to be sued for trying to address America's astonishing crisis of gun violence or that you're taking their constitutional rights away. But with all due respect, these people are wrong. Everything you are considering tonight is constitutional and despite what the gun industry lobbying organization, the NSSF, said in its letter, not preempted by state or federal law. And gun extremist rhetoric can obscure the fact that by far, most Americans want action on gun violence. The measures you are considering tonight are extremely popular. For example, a 2018 Pew Research Poll found that 67% of Americans, including half of all Republicans, support a ban on assault weapons. A 2019 study in the medical journal JAMA found that 85% of non-gun owners and 72% of gun owners support mandatory waiting periods for firearm purchases. So please know that you are not alone. You have an army of people behind you who, like you, refuse to make the deliberate choice to do nothing about guns in the face of this madness. And the first thing that we can do together is pass basic common sense laws, laws that work and are already working around the country. Every year, my organization publishes a gun law scorecard that shows that states with strong gun laws have low gun death rates and states with weak laws have high gun death rates, year after year after year. You will hear some people say tonight that gun laws do not work and they only hurt law-abiding citizens. They are wrong. Not only are they wrong, they are trying to convince you that in the face of rising rates of mass shootings and gun deaths overall, you should do nothing about guns. You should look everywhere else but guns, but you should also arm kindergarten teachers. You should look at doors and video games and bullyings, but don't you dare do anything about guns. They will tell you guns are not the problem, but they are. If guns made us safer, as many people probably will likely attest tonight, America would be the safest nation in the world. Yet the reality is, when it comes to gun violence, we are the least safe by a mile. We have the greatest number of privately-owned firearms and the highest rates of gun violence among peer nations, again, by a mile. But you have the chance tonight to do something. You can help ensure that when people get into arguments at the grocery store or at a kid's soccer game, they do not have the option to pull out their gun, something that happens with shocking frequency in the U.S. You can help ensure that a gun does not go off accidentally at a playground because no guns will be present. You can protect the rights of your residents to vote without people displaying guns to intimidate them. You can help prevent people from building their own untraceable guns secretly in their homes without a background check. You can help make sure that absurdly dangerous assault weapons, the weapons of choice for mass shooters, are in fewer hands. And God forbid, during a mass shooting, you can help ensure that the shooter must reload after 10 rounds. Remember, a number of first graders escaped when the Sandy Hook shooter was forced to reload. You have the choice tonight to make sure that a suicidal or homicidal person who makes the impulsive decision to buy a gun has 10 days to rethink their decision. And you have the choice tonight to make sure that when people buy guns, they know that that gun is way more likely to be used to kill them than to defend their family against an intruder. So in closing, you have a choice, the choice to do something, to not maintain the status quo and not listen to the people who offer no serious plan for a safer future. I believe tonight you will make the right choice. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any council members have questions for our city attorney or for the presentation from Giffords? Seeing none, we will turn to our first round of public comment. And just a reminder to everybody, we have a lot of people who want to comment this evening and so unfortunately, we have to limit everyone's comments to two minutes. So there'll be a timer that's up on the screen. And so when I call your name, if you'll come up to the podium and please tell us your name and the city you live in and then tell us what you'd like to tell us. So first, we have Deanne Bucher. And on deck, we have Catherine Awoda. I really apologize if I said your name's wrong.
Good evening. Thanks for the opportunity. My name is Deanne Booker. I live in Louisville. I was a teacher at Monarch High School for 25 years and I'd like to read you about an occurrence that happened at Monarch High School that has to do with guns that you probably don't know about. "We were at school on the day the Columbine shooting happened. You ran into my classroom out of breath in the moments after lunch. Turned on the TV. Something has happened," he managed to blurt out. "We didn't livestream news on our flip phones. We all watched transfixed as our peers." Those students and teachers evacuated the school with hands on their heads and then began to tell the stories that would change our school world until this day. "I wish I had known that day that your rushed entry into my classroom would, just months later, be tied in my memory to the bullet that entered your brain and ended your life too young in a drug deal gone bad. You weren't the kind of student that schools would openly mourn. You were acknowledged as not one of us. You were trouble with a capital T. My grief was private and personal. This teacher would carry two traumas of gun violence so intimately crocheted into memory that they are inseparable in my brain. School life has changed since that time in unimaginable ways and those changes were in place at schools like Robb Elementary in Uvalde, Texas. And yet, the locked doors, the security entrances, the lockdown drills, the lockout drills, the live shooter drills, the elimination of fire drills, the safe words, covered windows, survival buckets, and campus police introduced after Columbine did not protect the 21. Nor will these protect the survivors of the shooting from remorse, fear, and survivor's guilt."
Thank you so much. Next, we have Catherine. We're working on it.
Thank you. It's Catherine Awaki. I live here in Louisville and I love it here. And my daughter is about to go into kindergarten and I'm honestly scared to send her to public school, to the point where we've been talking about whether or not we're going to homeschool. Because for us, gun violence isn't some far-off statistic or something that you just read about in the news. We have already lost a family member to gun violence. So it really hits home for us and it's something that's very scary. I think it's important also to note that I grew up in a house with guns. I'm not anti-gun ownership. My grandfather taught me how to use a gun and part of that teaching was a lot about the responsibility that comes with being a gun owner and the safety involved with keeping and maintaining a gun. And I think that for me, it's really disheartening to hear this sort of false dilemma about can we have common sense gun laws versus we're taking away all of the guns. It's a false dilemma. You can be pro-gun ownership and also pro-common sense gun safety laws. Your mission here says to protect, preserve, and enhance the quality of life in our community. And I think for a lot of us parents, that means passing ordinances like this that make us feel safer to send our kids to school. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have an online comment from Robert Lynn.
Good morning, Mayor. I'm Robert Lynn. I've lived in Louisville for over 30 years. I've never committed criminal action. At about 8:00 PM on September 11th, 1960, I stood up, raised my right hand, and took an oath to uphold and defend with my life as necessary the Constitution of the United States. I'm here today to once again defend that Constitution, specifically the Second Amendment and Article 5. The Second Amendment does not contain any exceptions to, shall not be infringed, for the Louisville City Council, your puppet masters in the Boulder County Consortium of Cities, your co-conspirators in Superior, Lafayette, and Boulder, or any other politically-driven organization. Each of the ordinances you are trying to oppose is in violation of the Constitution of the United States in spite of what you heard earlier. And the oath of office that you took to support the Constitution brings us to the Article 5. If you really believe your ordinances are necessary, and believe it or not, I agree that a lot of them are, for the protection and well-being of your constituents, Article 5 of the United States Constitution lays out specific means of accomplishing your unstated goal to nullify the Second Amendment that would be upheld, upholding the Constitution, not trying to circumvent parts that you do not agree with. On a related topic, could you please come up with an ordinance to protect the students and teachers of Coal Creek, Louisville Elementary, Monarch, Fireside, and Louisville Middle School from real criminals, as was mentioned again earlier? You have police protection in the building that you're sitting in now. Can you at least not provide the same level of protection at our schools while something happens to, as you say, reduce gun violence? Or do you think that you are more important than they are? And finally, if I may misquote, a recent commentary full of misinformation and disinformation.
Thank you for your comments and I apologize to everyone I have to cut off this evening, but we have to keep it at two minutes so that everyone will get a chance to speak. Next, we have Josh Cooperman. And on deck, we'll have Lupita Cardoza.
Hi, Josh Cooperman. I live in Louisville. I would just like to say that I fully support all of the gun violence prevention ordinances that you're considering tonight and I hope that you enact all of them. Thank you.
Lupita, please tell us what you'd like to tell us and then we'll get translation services so council can, or interpretation services. Thank you.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Lupita Cardoza. Vivo ya de, tengo aquí 22 años y 9 años aquí en Louisville. Soy una madre de familia de nueve hijos y soy una líder de la comunidad de Lafayette, the Latino community, de paso, voz, Lafayette. Y la razón por la que estoy hoy aquí es porque miré que había seis, seis anuncios de, de los reglamentos que quieren poner. Y estoy de acuerdo, ya que yo, nosotros hemos sido víctimas. He perdido mi, mi familia por causas de las armas de juego. Eh, cuando emigre aquí a los Estados Unidos creo en la Constitución de los Estados Unidos y también sé que hay reglamentos, pero estoy en contra de que los menores de edad usen armas de fuego de alto calibre. No es justo y los vendedores sepan a quién les están vendiendo. Esto es intolerante. Como madre, les digo que creo mucho en la paz y en la seguridad y yo estoy proclamando que esta Constitución sea realmente la verdad, sin, sin los límites que otra persona quiera poner, ya que a veces nos encontramos en las tiendas amenazadas cuando vemos a estas personas con armas de fuego y también en las escuelas cuando vemos personas con armas de fuego. Mis hijos me dicen, ya no podemos ir a la escuela con miedo a presentar el examen. Vamos con miedo que nos va a pasar en la escuela. So estoy de acuerdo con estas seis peticiones que ustedes quieren poner reglamentos aquí en Louisville. Gracias.
Gracias. And now we'll have interpretation services.
Yes ma'am. My name is Lupita. I am a resident here in Louisville. I have nine children. I am in a, I saw an announcement of the six rules that are being proposed. I am in agreement with them. Because we are victims of weapon violence, I have lost family members to them. I believe in the Constitution when I came to the United States. I am against children having high caliber weapons and being able to obtain them. I hope that this Constitution is in truth and my children have mentioned to me that they are afraid to go to school now to take their exams because they live in fear of attending.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Audrey Frederick.
Hello. My name's Audrey and I live in Boulder. Thanks for letting me speak. I want to first say that I do fully support these ordinances. I'm also a mother to a six-year-old boy. I was watching him have his kindergarten graduation when the shooting in Texas recently happened. But that night, I was able to put him to bed and kiss him goodnight, not something that I take for granted. After all the gun violence in this country and national inaction, it's, it's easy to lose faith in humanity and our government, but I do still have faith in this community and government and faith that we have more in common than what separates us, that we all want to protect our churchgoers, our neighbors, and our children. Let's take a stand together by passing these ordinances to make our communities safer and send a message that we as a community in Boulder and Louisville surrounding communities that we stand for what's right to create a ripple effect in other parts of the country. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Lydia Ferrante Roseberry. And on deck, Katie Lace.
Good evening. I'm Reverend Lydia Ferrante Roseberry. I am a resident of Louisville and I'm the Minister of the Boulder Valley Unitarian Universalist Fellowship in Lafayette. And most importantly, I'm a mom. You might remember a little over a year ago, walking into King Supers and seeing a list of 10 names of the people who passed away. I remember that very well because my daughter could have been on that list very easily. She was employed at that King Supers on March 21st and she had taken that day off because we thought we were going on vacation, which we subsequently didn't do. I remember even asking her, why don't you just get back on the schedule? And she said, oh Mom, it's okay, you know, I'll just take the time off. Two of her coworkers died, one of them was her saying- One of them was her same age. Denny Stong was 19, as my daughter was. I'm here. I am here on behalf of all of those parents who want safer gun laws but are too grief-stricken to be able to speak. And as you know, in this country, there are more and more of them now every single day. We now have a community of stories to tell, those of us like me who are near misses, those of us who know victims who have died by gun violences, violence, and those who happen not to be there. A community of victims and survivors. Perhaps you know some people who have lost their lives in one of these categories. If so, you know the visceral response when these, when these gun violences happen again, when these mass shootings happen over and over again. And I live that whenever it's a grocery store or a school or anything like that. And I refuse to accept, refuse to accept that there's nothing we can do about this. And I'm really grateful to have this city council looking at these ordinances.
Next, we have Katie. And on deck, we have Cody Thompson.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Katie Lase, and I live in Lewisville. I am the mother of a seven-and-a-half-year-old son and a four-and-a-half-year-old daughter. And I live in a house that backs up to the playground of Fireside Elementary, where my son is about to enter second grade. And when we bought our house six years ago, I was excited to send the kids to the neighborhood school and to be so close, be able to keep an eye on him at recess. But every day after I walk my son to school and look out the window of the room I use as my office, I look at the school and I wonder if today's going to be the day. If today will be the day that I hear the gunshots or hear the kids screaming or see frightened children running, or worse. Whether I will be a parent gathering somewhere waiting to find out what happened to my son, who thinks, because he is seven, that he does lockdown drills in case a wild animal gets into the school. We are failing our children, and I am ashamed, but I am also hopeful and know that we can do better. I'm asking you to vote in favor of these common sense, broadly popular, lifesaving gun safety ordinances so that we can take a step forward toward a future where I don't look over at my child's school's playground and wonder if today will be the day. Thank you.
Thank you. Cody?
Hi, my name's Cody. I live in Lewisville. I'm just as saddened as, as you are when these shooting events occur. I think they're devastating, and I would like to see them and just as like, just as much as anyone else would. But the state of Colorado has spent years debating and writing gun laws that are diverse for our population. And we have to take everyone into account. The diversity is important in the city of Lewisville as well. They've written, for example, they've written a gun law that states of a specific age for a person who's gone through specific training and carrying a concealed weapon, been tested in handling and shooting of the weapon, and been vetted by the Colorado Bureau of Investigation and approved by the Boulder County Sheriff's Office has the ability to carry a concealed weapon in various locations. Okay, and they specifically call out which locations are not allowed, for example, schools. Okay. Your amendments are proposing that we change that rule. We're overriding that to say that you can't carry weapons in an empty field, right, in open space, right? Or a grocery store. That may be more of a reaction to what happened in Boulder. But it doesn't cover things like, you can, you can still carry a gun in a, in a toy store, right, in the city of Lewisville, but not a grocery store. Things, the laws aren't written, they have to be debated. These kind of things have to be debated by the state legislator, by the federal government. They spend a lot of time going through these laws and debating these things for years and, and months, right? And so to review them for two hours, for two hours tonight and come up with some resolutions to change these things that affect the interpretation of the Second Amendment, right? And to change what the state law states someone who has been permitted by the state to do is just, it's too short, right? You got, these have to be debated and discussed for a long period of time. I don't think that this, this board has that skill set or that knowledge to spend the two hours discussing this to change how we interpret those things. So that's my opinion. Thanks.
Thank you very much. We have an online comment from Rosalie Lynn.
Hello?
We can hear you.
Thank you. My name is Rosalie Lynn. I live in Lewisville. I note that there are numerous definitions at the beginning of these ordinances. There are two that I question particularly. One is the definition of assault weapon, which I think is open to interpretation. There are a lot of characteristics listed, and I don't believe that all of these can be considered absurdly dangerous. The other one is illegal because without any further community discussion of whether, what an assault weapon is, now we call it illegal. I also dispute much of proposed ordinance 1832. It has certainly not been proven that the presence of firearms at government buildings and offices, polling places, ballot counting facilities, and public demonstrations poses a serious threat to First Amendment rights. I think a trained person carrying a concealed weapon is the best deterrent to a malicious shooter in the aforementioned places and in places frequented by children and families. It's been documented several times over the last few years that a trained person with a concealed weapon is able to intervene in a malicious shooting situation and save innocent lives. I understand that a place having security screening may logically prohibit weapons, but most places frequented by children and families do not have even cursory security screening in place. I also wonder if it's really true that a person with a permit to carry a weapon actually has a doubled risk of death by firearm homicide. Might this be true only by persons without permit and without training? In no way are any of these proposed ordinances a deterrent to persons who plan to commit crimes with any type of weapon. I think the entire group of ordinances should be not taken up, and I don't think a criminal will read these. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Kaylee Concanon.
Good evening, council members and Lewisville neighbors. My name is Kaylee Concanon, Lewisville resident, mom of two. As an academic librarian, I believe in research and making public policy decisions based on data. Luckily, we have extensive research that says gun laws work, that they reduce death, and that they balance Second Amendment rights with the right of citizens to live. Raising the minimum firearm purchase age to 21 makes sense when the data tells us that 18- to 20-year-olds commit gun homicide at a rate four times of that of adults 21 and older. Requiring a waiting period makes sense, knowing that suicide attempts are often impulsive, unlikely to be successful unless someone has access to a firearm. Regulating the sale of unserialized gun components makes sense in that these can become ghost guns accessed by individuals without a background check. Prohibiting the open carry of firearms in public spaces makes sense because we do have data that shows open carry makes people more fearful and more aggressive, and it's not a deterrent to violence. Lastly, a prohibition on assault weapons and large-capacity magazines makes the most sense with our ongoing experience with ubiquitous mass shootings. If the federal assault weapon ban overturned in 2004 was still in effect, researchers estimate a 70% reduction in mass shootings. In summary, these proposed gun ordinances make sense. They will make our communities safer, and they will help turn the cultural tide in this country away from a shameful reality of daily gun violence.
Thank you. Next, we have Kylie I.
Good evening. I am a Lewisville resident. I grew up with, what, are you a congressman? No. I said he can summon Caleb. I just know him as Caleb, all right? But I also grew up in a house with guns. My brothers and my dad are avid hunters to this day. They taught me from the very beginning how to safely store an unloaded locked gun. Last year, I was on spring break with my husband and my two kids, and I got a text from my dad. It said, I'm in Neptune Mountaineering with the SWAT team. They've detained me, and they, or they estimate that I walked out of King Supers two minutes before the mass shooter walked in. Our daughter had a dance showcase last weekend. I asked my dad if he wanted to come. I told him it was in Broomfield High School's auditorium. He paused, and I said, what, Papa? You have something going on? And he said, no. But you know what? After King Supers, I can't stand to think of watching my youngest granddaughter get shot onstage. And a dark auditorium is a perfect place for a mass shooter. He ended up coming. And when he saw me with tears down my face, he said, you must be a proud mom. Your mom would be proud, too. And I said, no, Papa. There are 100 kids on that stage taking their final bow, and it's dark in this room, and the doors are unsecured, and there are no police in this room. If a mass shooter comes in, those 100 children are sitting ducks. We don't have to live like this, and we cannot continue to let people die picking up prescriptions or going to the movies or sitting in a pew or performing onstage or learning what two plus two is. So I beg you and I implore you, please vote yes on these ordinances.
Thank you. And I apologize, I'm not totally clear on the handwriting on this one. So your first name starts with a G, and your last name is Walters. And I apologize that I couldn't read it.
Hello, my name is Gillian Walters.
Thank you, Gillian. I'm sorry for not being able to read it.
Not at all. I'm a resident of Erie. Thank you for letting me speak. Up until November, this, past November, I was 10 years in a public school as an elementary school teacher, teaching grades three and four. I've taught in Boulder County. I've taught in Aurora. And most recently, I taught in Weld County. I still work with children now, but I just wanted to talk a little bit about how each year, it became more and more traumatic for my classroom to go through the drills that we would go through. And we would do them every, 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 you know, every quarter or what have you. We'd have to do a lockdown drill. And every time we did it, I would have to pull a, a circle afterwards and just invest in some pretty significant social, emotional time. A lot of the, with each year, more and more kids became more scared, more frightened. We'd have more tears. We'd have much more of, what would happen if this was us? What would you do? What would happen to us if, if somebody came into our school? And, and I would tell them, you know, that I'd do my best, and we'd be okay. But as time went by, I, I knew that I wasn't being honest with them. And it, and it broke my heart. And I just, I just implore you, these are just sensible things to pass for all of our schoolchildren. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Carol.
Hi, my name is Carol Callicott. I live in Lewisville, and I thank you for this opportunity to speak. Hashtag Columbine. Hashtag Newtown. Hashtag Aurora. Hashtag Buffalo. Hashtag Uvalde. Hashtag Boulder. My knowledge of US geography is at least partly informed by where the latest mass shootings have occurred. A lot of people, when I tell them where I'm from, have never heard of Lewisville. This town that we love is off the radar for so many people. I don't want our town to become the next hashtag. We are 26 more times more likely to die by gun homicide because we live in the United States of America. Gun violence is the number-one killer of children in this country, and Colorado has the 22nd-highest gun mortality rate in the country. This is a travesty. Our city is not immune in this country where we are being told by the gun industry that in order to be safe from gun violence, we must have more guns, guns everywhere. So gun violence, gun sales rise and gun violence worsens. I feel anxious every time I go to church, to a movie, shopping, or send my kids to school because guns in public spaces make us all less safe and less free. We have plenty of examples from around the world and in states with strong gun safety laws that common sense gun laws work. It is unconscionable that our federal government continues to do nothing to address our rampant gun violence epidemic. In Colorado, our legislators have made progress, and in lifting preemption, they have placed upon the cities and city councils both the burden and the opportunity to address this epidemic. So here in Lewisville, we have to do something. I thank you all for being brave enough to say enough to taking, for taking up these ordinances and for leading the way down a path that I hope surrounding cities, our state, and eventually our nation will follow. Each of your proposals are common sense laws backed by research that will help make us safer. Thank you for taking these up, and I ask for a yes vote.
Thank you. Next, we have an online comment from Erin Davenport.
Hello, my name is Erin Davenport. I live in Lewisville. I understand the outrage and I feel the pain of mass shootings and gun violence in the country. However, I feel as though the measures proposed here are only dealing with a symptom and not a root cause. I would like to see the committee and our council focus on what measures we can do to stop violent individuals, disturbed individuals, those feeling isolated and secluded from our community from hurting each other. Guns are merely the tool in which they're being used and not the root cause of our issue. An inanimate object does not hurt anyone, and I want us to focus on what can we do to ensure that our police are not susceptible to freezing the way we've already did. I'd like for us to focus on public health and counseling to ensure that we can find those individuals who are struggling, reach out to them, and pull them back into the fold as a healthy community that we have. The likelihood of gang violence, street violence, those, those types of items are incredibly low in our community. And I am afraid that we are doing a lot to pass legislation or ordinances in this case that will make us feel good but not actually make us any safer as a community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have a comment online from someone whose phone number ends in the digits 1068. You can dial star six. You can see it just takes a few weeks off of Zoom for me to forget all of the quick keys. I think you can dial star six to be unmuted.
Can you hear me?
We can now.
Okay, thank you. So my name is Steve Altshuler. I live at 1555 Taylor Mountain Drive. And my notes are a little jumbled, so please bear with me. I would like to point out that Chicago has the most severe gun restriction laws in the country. They also have the most gun crime and the most murders per capita in the country. So if gun restriction laws work, why wouldn't they have the lowest crime rate? The answer is pretty simple. A, criminals don't care about the laws. There's already laws on the books that make it illegal for lots of people to have guns, but the criminals keep getting them anyway. There are laws on the books that make it illegal to murder people. And Chicago had 1,000 people in each of the last couple of years that were murdered just in drive-by shootings. The gun laws don't help the honest people. They only help the criminals because they know that anywhere they go, if, if you don't allow concealed carry in movie theaters or supermarkets or churches or anywhere, then the criminals know[1747.41] theaters or supermarkets or churches or anywhere, then the criminals know they can go anywhere with impunity and do whatever they want to do. The best way to keep our children safe is to make sure there's one point of entry at the school, to make sure there's an armed police officer or a retired military veteran that knows how to handle guns safely, that is there to greet all the kids as they come in. And other people will know that there's either a police officer or an armed vet inside the school and they will know that if they go there, they're going to get killed. And they will be far less likely to harm our children if they know there's any risk to them. If you take away...
Thank you for your comments. And I just want to...
I'm sorry, is that the end of the time?
Yes, sir. Thank you so much for your comments. There's another round of public comment for everybody though, so don't worry, we'll have more time to hear from folks. I just want to remind everybody to please be respectful when other people are speaking so everybody feels comfortable coming up to the podium to tell us what they'd like to tell us. Next we have Amanda J.
Hi, thanks. I'm Amanda Jakem. I live in Lewisville, Ward Three, and I've got two kiddos. One is entering seventh grade at LMS and the other is entering fourth grade at LES. As a parent, our number one responsibility is to keep our kids safe. We all tell them to put on their bike helmets and eat their vegetables and put on their sunscreen, teach them about stranger danger and seat belts. And in most countries, that's enough. That's where you kind of have to stop teaching them about safety, but not in this country. In this country, we have to talk to our kids about active shooters and we have to talk to them about lockdown drills. After Uvalde, I spoke with my soon-to-be seventh grader and we talked about his building at LMS and if there were windows in the classroom that he could potentially jump out of if he knew that there was an active shooter in the school. And, you know, I've read all of the articles that the experts tell us, you know, don't go into too many details with your kids. Try to make them feel safe. They're not safe. My son knows it and I know it. And after we talked about that school shooting, we sat on his bed and we cried because nothing is being done. He knows that I'm here tonight. My daughter knows that I'm here tonight. They know that their city council and their community is voting on potentially passing some common sense gun legislation that could play a significant role in keeping them safe and making all of us feel safe. So I am begging you, please vote yes on all five ordinances. I really want to go home tonight, look those kids in the eye and tell them that we care. Enough is enough and we're ready to do something.
Thank you for your comments. Next we have Molly Marsh Heine. And on deck we have Liz P.
Hi, I'm Molly Marsh Heine and I'm a Lewisville resident. April 20th, 1999, I was in King Supers parking lot with my one-year-old son in the back when we heard about the Colorado, or the Columbine shootings. Little did I know it would define his entire educational experience and the educational experience of my other family members, both children and adults. All the places that we frequent, we've heard this story from all of my fellow citizens here tonight. Grocery stores, theaters, places of worship, schools, hospitals, concerts and festivals, these, this is where we live. This is our everyday experience. And we are not safe. I couldn't agree more with Amanda. Imagine street fair. Imagine street fair. How comfortable are we in this room about how safe one of the most treasured and popular events that Lewisville puts on? We live in a gridlocked partisan country. We know that. It is hard. And yet, we can take care of each other. Our community can take care of each other. In fact, it is the least and the most that we might possibly be able to do. So I urge you, please, to pass these ordinances. I'm in full support.
Thank you. Next we have Liz P.
Good evening. My five, my four-year-old daughter asked if she could read me a book about Princess Jasmine last night. She thumbed through the pages and said, "There are a lot of pages here, but I'm willing to give it a go." This was a phrase I had never heard her say before and it really gave me pause. Our country experienced the second largest school shooting and the deadliest weekend of mass shootings in 2022, just this past weekend, all within two weeks of each other. We saw 20 first graders get shot to death in 2012 and not a single gun safety law was passed. Other countries have been able to prevent mass shootings with gun legislation. What in the world are we waiting for? As American poet and activist Amanda Gorman stated, "It takes a monster to kill children." But to watch monsters kill children again and again and do nothing isn't just insanity, it is inhumanity. You cannot deny that this little town of Lewisville is humane. We all saw it firsthand with the community's response to those whose lives were devastated by the Marshall fire. It is what got us through some dark times and continues to encourage neighbors to put one foot in front of the other and rebuild their futures. Our gun safety laws need to reflect the values of this community. Lewisville residents care about their kids, their teachers, baristas, grocery workers, the list goes on. We have to be willing to give it a go, as my four-year-old daughter encouraged herself last night to read a book she had no business reading. I ask that you pass the common sense gun ordinances presented tonight to prevent unnecessary death and injury and uphold the wishes of the community to be a safe and peaceful place to live.
Thank you. Next we have Kathy Hagan.
Hi, I'm Kathy Hagan. I'm from Erie and my small business does a lot of business in Lewisville. The experiment is over. The theory that more guns make us safer and that Americans can self-regulate when it comes to guns has failed disastrously. Gun violence is an epidemic in this country. Not only does gun violence lead to deaths, it also leads to trauma, a lot of trauma. Our children have to do lockdown drills, hide under desks in the dark and stay quiet in case a gunman is hunting them. We have police presence in our grocery stores. We hear about weekly mass shootings, unintentional shootings of minors and gun suicides. I am angry at the inaction of our federal government because inaction is deadly. We are swimming in the consequences of inaction. Our federal government is deadlocked and unwilling to enact laws to keep us safe, but I am so proud of our local governments, Lewisville, Boulder, Superior and Lafayette, for putting these ordinances up for a vote and hopefully enacting them. The data is consistent that stronger gun laws, communities, with stronger gun laws, communities are safer. Mississippi, Idaho, Montana, Arkansas and South Dakota have the weakest gun laws in the country. Guess what? They have the highest gun fatalities in the country. Unfortunately, guns can come in from other cities, so we need to pressure other cities, counties and the state to enact these laws as well. Thank you for taking the lead and being brave against the threats and intimidation from the gun lobby. Enough is enough. We have to stand up. Please, please vote yes on these ordinances and take a big step in protecting our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Karen Foreman. And on deck we have Ash Taylor.
Good evening. My name is Karen Foreman. I live in Lewisville. First I want to mention that I'm a elementary school teacher in Lewisville. I completely support every word that the mothers have already said. I'm not going to talk on that specific subject because they speak for me and I don't think I could compose myself for that. I just want to speak for two reasons, to thank the elected officials for standing up for what you believe in, whether or not I agree with you or not, and to express my support for the gun control ordinances. True strength is in the long run view that aims toward a society that makes us proud when we explain it to our children. We should not be bullied, threatened or abused because of our opinions. The statistics of gun violence in the United States have been tracked for a long, long time. I've been tracking them for a long, long time. Luckily, we had other people to help us with that, including a librarian. We're not doing well. We need to be brave enough to go in a different direction. My brother-in-law was a beloved man who suffered from depression. If there had been a waiting period for his gun, he would not have died when he was in his twenties. My friend had a gun in their home and the husband pulled it out the night a stranger broke in. The former story is repeated much more often. But the latter is a reality that should be respected as well. The gun control ordinances before us in Lewisville are extremely moderate and do not threaten any individual or group. Thanks to everyone for being willing to have the discussion and I would also encourage all of us to expand the discussion from here, including things brought up by people like the gentleman, the younger gentleman with the computer earlier.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So that is all the cards and hands we see at this time. We will have another public comment period after council comments and questions. Oh, I'm sorry, Ash, right? Sorry, I said Ash was on deck and I just moved ahead and then I'll get to my spiel. Sorry about that, Ash.
That's okay. I haven't done this before, so I don't know what the policy is. I'm Ash Taylor. I live in Lewisville, have two kids who were born in Colorado and an incredible wife who's lived in Boulder County most of her life. I'd like to thank our council members for taking on this important topic and thank you all for the overflowing attendance. I have family and close friends in several countries. They worry about a lot of things. They do not worry about assault weapons. I grew up with guns and agree it's a complete false dichotomy to think that we either have more guns than people in this country or none at all. What's being discussed today is commonplace in other developed countries. In fact, much stricter regulations exist in the US around things like cars. I consider it insanity when a majority of Americans support common sense gun regulations that we have not progressed further at a national level. That makes it that much more important, the regulations are passed at local level. I thank you for considering these ordinances and please ask that you pass them. Thank you.
Thank you. And so now, I'll say, I don't have any other cards and there are no other hands up in the queue, but there is another public comment period coming up after council discussion. So if people did want to comment, please fill out a comment card and bring it to the city clerk. Or if you're online, please go ahead and find that raise hand button at the bottom of your screen and go ahead and get that hand raised now for our next public comment period so we can get you in the queue. And that takes us to our council discussions. Any council members have questions or comments this evening? Council member most.
Yeah, I'd just like to comment. First of all, I'd like to thank everyone who's here for sharing their stories. I think that's really, really important. My story is that I have a 16-year-old, a rising junior in Monarch High School, who completely out of the blue announced to me last week, I have her busy sorting through colleges to try to figure out where we're going to go to visit in the fall. And out of the blue, she said, "You know, Mom, I think I want to go to school in Europe so I don't have to worry about being shot." And it just breaks my heart to hear that, you know? I'm a single mother by choice. I very intentionally brought this young woman, amazing young woman, into the world on my own and she was very active in teens, the teens group, Demand Action. In fact, that was her public service. She was phone banking before the last major election and she drove me here tonight. And a couple of weeks ago, I had talked to her about coming and getting some of her friends from high school to come and do what you all are doing here this evening. And, and since the Uvalde shooting, we, I just stopped talking to her about it because I could tell she was upset. And on the way, she drove me here tonight and she said, "You know, Mom, you know, I just can't do this tonight. I just need to be a teenager. I hope you understand." And my response to her was, "Yeah, it's my turn to fight. We're going to, the adults are going to be here and fight for you." So I just want to thank everyone for being here. A couple of quick comments that I just feel like I need to make. I really appreciate the conversation that people are having about this false dichotomy between violating people's gun rights and having common sense gun safety rules. Both of those things can coexist. I feel like it's really important for us to sit here now as a community, as a council, and ask ourselves if, God forbid, something like Uvalde happened in our community and we had the opportunity to put restrictions in place, constitutional, you know, restrictions in place, and we fail to act? And we were talking about Monarch High School or Fireside or LES or Coal Creek or LMS, like how we would feel as elected officials if we were not taking our responsibility to do everything we can within our power to prevent that sort of horrific massacre from happening in our community? And so I, I asked my council members, I don't know where everybody stands on all of these ordinances, but to, to use that as your guiding principle for making a decision And I also want to say, someone had mentioned that, that we need to have more debate. I'm 60 years old. This debate's been going on for my entire lifetime. So there's been plenty of debate. The idea that we haven't talked about it enough, we've talked about it enough. Maybe not this city council, this specific group of people for, you know, whatever period of time, but this is a conversation all of us have been having for years and years and years. So I think we've had, there's been plenty of debate and I think the time to act is now. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Maloney.
Thank you, Mayor. And I know I'm on Zoom, so let me know if there's any issue with my audio.
We can hear you perfectly and you look good on the screen.
Thank you. So I was elected in 2015 and re-elected in 2019 and both times in my oath to office, I said that I would uphold the Constitution of the United States of America and that's something I truly believe. And that includes the Second Amendment. It includes all the amendments and, you know, includes everything that's there. And like my colleague, Councilor Most, I appreciate all the emails we've gotten. I appreciate all the public testimony. We'll have another round of that. So yeah, this is all important, us forming our opinions and, you know, us gathering information. So I think one of the themes that I've heard is everyone has spoken and voiced concern about the escalating gun violence and mass shootings. It seems that that's a point we can all agree upon because I think everyone is horrified by those situations. And some have pointed out that legislation at municipal level is inappropriate. And I don't think I necessarily disagree with that because I believe the legislative and executive branches of both the state and the federal government have failed to act. The legislation that the state did that said municipalities can enact their own legislation to me doesn't make any sense. But regardless of that, I think as a counselor and somebody who upholds the Constitution, Constitution of the United States of America, I feel compelled to act and to vote to support the proposed ordinances. You know, do we have the best solution? Some people have pointed out, you know, do we have enough data? Do we have, do we know that this will have an impact? And I can't answer empirically yes, but I feel like doing nothing is doing nothing. And, and doing something at least has the, the opportunity to have some influence. And I'm hoping that with us passing these ordinances, it will give political encouragement, embarrassment, whatever you want to call it, for our state and federal representatives to act. So, you know, my goal is for countrywide common sense laws that really sort of have an impact. And I do respect gun ownership. You know, I have family and friends who are hunters, swartzmen, and we have to respect that. But one other thing I would like to say is, you know, there's been some discussion or some comments about having police officers use in schools. That's something that our city council has supported, but the Boulder Valley School Board has voted to eliminate those resource officers. So if you feel strongly about that, I think you should voice your opinion with the school board. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Maloney. Any other comments from council members? Council member Fahy.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes. I wanted to point out the, the information on statistics. One statistic that was not reported by anyone this evening yet was about the ban that the federal government did put in place in 1994 that sunsetted. And after the ban lapsed, there was a 183% increase in shootings in the United States and a 239% increase in deaths. That's significant. That isn't something that we can ignore. I think it's very important for us to act on these things now. If not us, who? If not now, when? So let's move on with this and do what we can and as Mayor Pro Tem said, try and motivate the people at the state and federal level to do what they will do.
Thank you, Council member Fahy. Council member Dickinson.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, thank you, everyone who's come tonight and is tuning in. I was a school teacher in North Carolina for several years and I lost several students to, to gun violence and I still, I still remember those kids. It is a really horrific thing to have in your life. And it wasn't, it wasn't a school shooting. It was not quite that, but we did, in that school, go through a active shooter. But we did, in that school, go through a active shooter moment with the SWAT team in our school and those things. And I had the duty of protecting children against that. And it is insanity to expect teachers to play those roles. And so we do need to fix our country. And I, sort of like Mayor Protem Maloney was saying, I don't know if we're fixing our country here tonight. Louisville is a small town, and I'm really happy that Boulder and Superior and Lafayette are considering this concurrently. And I think the state and the federal government have let us down on just really reasonable rules. We have great rules around driver's licenses. And if you want to switch that to a motorcycle, you need a different test. If you want to drive a school bus, you need to do other things. Like, there's a lot we do to allow people to operate a piece of machinery that is meant to get people from point A to point B, but might accidentally kill someone. And so we should at least be that rigorous with, you know, something that is meant to kill something. And so, you know, I think we're doing some really good things here tonight. I'll be supporting everything. But in the last few weeks, I've had a lot of conversations with gun owners. I only have an antique rifle from the 1800s as a family heirloom. But I've spoken to a lot of people. And what I hear from a lot of gun owners, if you engage in a conversation with a gun owner, they are very, very, very responsible with their guns. It's a really big thing. It's really hard to talk. You don't say like, hey, so you don't lock your gun up, right? Like, they really care about it. And, you know, I was speaking to someone who, you know, he's like, I bought my son a shotgun when he turned 18. I'm like, oh, have you trained him how to use these? And then just, yeah, like, absolutely. And we do this, and we do that. And they're like, and that's kind of what we're asking for, right? Is you don't want your son to just go buy a shotgun at 18. That's not what you were hoping for, right? This is a family decision, and you have rules around it. And as a city and as a country, we need better rules around it. And I think these are some really good ones. And I'll just, as we move forward also, point out that, yeah, the gun manufacturers as well, we talk about all the weapons that are out there. People in Chicago aren't making their own guns, right? There are a lot of weapons in our country, and almost every one of those weapons is originally purchased legally. And then they get out there. And so the fact that there are so many puts them in so many hands. And so I'm happy that it'll be a little bit more difficult to get a gun and that a little bit more time will be spent in making those decisions. And what's really sad and awful and wonderful at the same time is that tonight is not a reaction to Buffalo. Tonight is not a reaction to Uvalde. This has been in place. It just happens to be here tonight. And many of you may not have known we were doing this three weeks ago because it wasn't national news kind of thing. But in the horrible reality of our world right now, of course, some mass shootings happened between when this got put on the agenda and when we had our first reading, and now for our second reading. Of course, there have been more massacres. There's never a time where that's not happening in our country. So I just want to be clear that this is not a response to one moment. This is something that we were doing. Someone wrote in proactively before Uvalde, but after so many other things. So I'm just kind of pointing that out as well. And I'll save any more comments I have for the second round. But I think I'm pretty much done, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Lay.
I appreciate the comments of my fellow council members because they've obviously spent time with all of this as have probably every one of you who are here in the chambers tonight, as well as folks who are on the phone. And I really appreciate all of you taking such an interest in this. And I don't think you're taking an interest just because of the recent issues that have come up in Uvalde and Buffalo. Those are horrific. And there are others. And hearing one after another, after another, after another, it just makes your eyes glaze over for a while. And it could make your heart glaze over for a little while because it's just too much to contemplate that much carnage and pain. And those of you who've had family members lost to gun violence, whatever kind, whether it's crime, whether it's suicide, or otherwise, or, God forbid, the people who are in the military certainly have a different idea about that. And I've never met anybody in the military who had a very sanguine view about the day-to-day unimportance of how you manage guns. They're some of the most respectful of those folks. I grew up in northeastern Colorado around guns. I certainly had my share of shooting when I was a kid and shooting BB guns and things like that. But I'm not a gun owner right now, nor do I anticipate that. But I do appreciate those who want to have guns, want to possess them, believe that they need to do that for their personal safety, are law-abiding largely, and who use them for sporting purposes, whether that's shooting cans or hunting. I certainly don't have any problem with that. And I think, you know, this is, in my estimation, a situation where on the one, you're not going to be really happy if what you want to do is confiscate guns. That's probably not where we're going. There are people who really would like to do that. It's not going to happen. That's not what we're about tonight. I don't think anybody has made the argument. On the other end, we haven't and won't be likely endorsing no limitations on any gun ownership or use. That's not what we're about either, and that's not the law. So what is the law, as we understand it, and have been told by those who have been studying it and have shared with us their views, is that we have the ability and a lot of policy latitude to reasonably regulate. And so that's, I think, what we're about tonight. I think there are commonalities across those folks who are against what we're considering tonight and those who are in favor. One of them certainly is the horror of what they've seen. I don't think anybody here, anybody listening, anybody around the country is comfortable with what we've seen in mass shootings and gun violence. It's just not true. And we shouldn't paint each other that way. I think we all have different thoughts about how that needs to get remedied. And that kind of brings me to a couple of points. One is, why are we here? I was appreciative of your mentioning the mission that is of our city government. Commitment is to protect, preserve, and enhance the quality of life in our community. That's what our mission is, as council members. And that's partly why we're here. But there's a negative reason why we're here, too. I don't relish, and somebody had used the term, one of the speakers had said something to the effect of, "We're dying to pass these," which is an interesting choice of words. We're not dying to pass these. I'd really rather be working on helping the people who have lost their homes in Louisville. We've got plenty to do. We have plenty to do on all other kinds of subjects. We don't need to be working on this. Some people say that we shouldn't be working on this, but we're where we are. These are not, we're not looking for this problem. That shooter in Boulder could have easily been a shooter in King Supers here. And we are on borrowed time, in my view. We aren't one of those. #Louisville. I don't want to be that. I don't think any of us want to be that. And so what have we had? Well, Mayor Protem mentioned it, that we have been let down by the federal government. Time and again, we have been let down by our state government, which has thrown up its hands at some level and said, you know, maybe you guys can do something at the local level. I think that's a little bit absurd, just like the Mayor Protem said, because we don't want a patchwork of laws. But we're the only ones who are doing anything to address the problem. And that's true across the country, not with only small towns, but larger cities. They're clamoring for this. And for somebody to try to address some of these problems. And we're the laboratories, if you will, of democracy across the country. And so that's why we're here. The proliferation of guns, particularly since the end of the assault weapons ban, hasn't seemed to solve the problem. That's usually the kind of criticism that's given to us or other governments is like, well, you know, these things are not going to work. Well, militarizing the societies not seemed to work either. It's only encouraged folks to amass more. One of the things that I did this afternoon was to talk with a friend of mine who was a former FBI agent who wrote the active shooter protocols for the FBI, a person named Kate Schweit. And I asked her about some of the measures here and which ones she thought were really important. Raising the gun age, or the ownership age to 21, something that she absolutely believes in. And she's not a Second Amendment, you know, person who wants to repeal the Second Amendment. She grew up with guns. She has guns now. That's not the issue. But that would be very helpful. And assault, basically a ban on use and sale of semi-automatic weapons, which just doesn't have a place. And so those are two pieces. And I think the laws on the books haven't served us completely. I mean, we keep hearing that, but what we're doing or what we're considering tonight are largely gap fillers. They're designed where there are breaks in the law to fill those. And I think that's a good way of thinking about it. I think we're here because we have to do something. And as a community, as a small town, we don't want the kinds of carnage that we've seen. And we can't wait for that to happen before we act. So I guess those are my initial impressions. And, you know, one final thing, which is that my daughter, who's an actress, has done these exercises, right? And one of the big exercises is both and, or, you know, where you add something. You don't say one or the other. And as was mentioned, we don't have to choose between supporting mental health, supporting the schools in terms of assisting them. And we don't have to somehow compromise people's constitutional rights because we're not going to do that. These are both ands. And so that's my take. And I'll put it back to you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lay. I just want to take a moment to thank our interpreters this evening and give them a chance to switch out. It is really wonderful to have people who have skills to be interpreters, and they most often have to work on nights and weekends. And we couldn't do it without you. Thanks for what you're doing. And just give me the signal when you're ready for us to keep going. You're ready? All right. Thank you very much. Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity to speak this evening. And I really appreciate everyone who's shown up today. It's been a real show of the solidarity and amazing will of our community. You know, our community reached a breaking point on gun violence prevention a long time ago. And tonight, it's time to take action. Every Colorado parent's nightmare became a reality in 1999 during the Columbine shooting. And as a high school student, I endured lockdowns even in Boulder in the wake of the shooting. And I thought, after the murder of 13 innocent people, our leaders would take action. But it got worse. In 2004, the federal government allowed its assault weapons regulation to expire. In 2007, 32 people were killed at Virginia Tech. In 2009, 13 people were dead at Fort Hood and 14 people in Birmingham. In 2012, violence came back to Colorado. 12 were dead and 70 were injured in Aurora. And later that year, in what I assumed would be the breaking point, 27 people died at Sandy Hook Elementary School, including 20 elementary school children. Elementary school children. In 2016, in Orlando, 49 people died and 53 were injured. And in Las Vegas in 2017, 58 people died and 546 people were injured. That's crazy. King Supers, Buffalo, Uvalde, Tulsa. It goes on and on, and there's just too many to mention. I've only mentioned a couple here. So here we are. Local communities like Louisville can and should act. Gun violence in America is a public health issue, and local governments have an obligation to protect public health. Public health officials know that local governments can band together, and they banded together to get rid of smoking in bars and restaurants. Other communities have passed similar ordinances on gun violence that have been deemed presumptively lawful by even the conservative Justice Antonin Scalia and have been upheld in courts across this country. Tonight, I hope, will be the beginning of a movement across Colorado and the nation. Because this violence has to stop. And tonight, we take a stand and we make Louisville a safer community.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. I'll just add my comments at this point. One of the hardest things about gun violence, in my opinion, is that it is so personal to so many people. And I have experienced gun violence in my life. And the first time I did, I was five years old. And I can't really talk about that with you all. And so you might notice, I've gotten fairly emotional when some of you are talking. And it's because it is very personal. And we haven't done anything to correct the issue. As I got older, I experienced gun violence several other times in my life, and those are easier for me to talk about. Maybe not that easy. Sorry. Just to have such small children still experiencing so much violence because we've failed to act year after year after year. And the federal government has failed to act, and the state government has failed to act. I am proud of our state for taking some steps in the last year and for at least owning up that if they couldn't do it, they would get out of the way and let us do it. We will work together as communities and put together a quilt of communities across the country where we have reasonable regulation. I apologize. It's incredibly emotional because the violence leads to the end of human life. And if you know someone and have lost someone or experienced... Thank you, Councilmember. And if you know someone and have lost someone, or experi- thank you, Councilmember Most. We, we can do this together. And, and tonight, I'm very proud of my colleagues for speaking up and talking about what needs to be done. When I was in high school, I was in Jefferson County during the Columbine massacres, and I, I played high school softball with those girls, and, um, you know, debate team. We did these things together, and lives were lost, and we marched together, and we fought together, and I'm wearing my Never Forgotten pin tonight because we said we were going to make a difference and make a change. And we met with Bill Clinton, and we were going to close the loophole, and we were going to end this violence that was senseless, and nothing has been done. So there are critics that are saying, you know, you're only an eight-square-mile town, and that this won't make a difference. And what I would say is, I would just turn to that, we really have been collaborating with our neighbors and our partners. Your local elected officials talk to one another around the region. Denver's already taken a number of steps. They've already adopted a number of these ordinances. One ordinance in particular that Denver had when they were debating the other ones was open carry and concealed carry in city council chambers. And I can tell you, it impacted everyone on your Louisville City Council very personally that people are able to open carry and concealed carry in this meeting tonight when we're discussing this sensitive topic, because there are such heated feelings around it. So to be taking up that issue among the others at the same time takes a certain bravery that I'm very proud of my colleagues for, and I'm very grateful that you are willing to act on all of these ordinances together. I think it's incredibly important, and we can really make a difference. I hope the other communities around us that were afraid to act see the bravery from the, the council in Boulder, and Superior, and Louisville, and even some of the measures that were taken by Lafayette. I hope they can do the rest of them as well, and they can see that we can do this, and we can all act together and pass these measures. It has to start somewhere, and tonight, it's happening in the city of Louisville, I hope. I'm hopeful. And, um, we, we can really make a difference. And so I would just encourage everyone who's gotten involved, whether you agree with me or disagree with me, to please continue to have your voices heard, and to continue these efforts in other communities, and we will make a real positive change. Thank you. That takes us to our second round of public comment. We have a couple more people who signed up to comment. Um, I just, if folks are online and they'd like to comment and haven't had a chance, go ahead and raise your hand, and we will take our second and final round of public comment on the ordinances. First, we have Guillermo Venezuela.
Hi, everyone. And as Ashley said, my name is Guillermo Venezuela. Originally, I come from Chile 20 years ago. I was very impacted about the Columbine shooting, and that time I was in my country. I was thinking it's going to happen only one time, it's something casual, it's something, um, happen sporadic. However, from that time to now, we have more than 200 shooting in the schools. So personally, I am working in Denver Public School, um, and I see every day all the children, all the teachers, all the principals, where, um, every time when it's, it's something wrong in the school or something weird, they freaking out. Even me, I, 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 I go into the school for few, for half hour, I want to leave pretty soon, because that is happening right now. I'm very sensible, I'm very proud about our town, they, that initiative with the, with, with Boulder, Lafayette, and Superior. However, this is not enough, because it's, it's, we stay being above all in the, in the state, and the people can come for different, even in, in the, in the situation for the King Super, the guy came from Alval. So we, the, the job, our, our journey starts right now. So we need to go to expand in all the state, if hopefully in all the country. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Heather Kins.
Oh, I can take this off. I just, people start talking about doors lately, and as someone who also drops my baby off at fireside every day, and memorizes whatever dinosaur outfit he's wearing, just in case, and lives right by fireside, I think we could all agree, more doors would be good. Fire exits are good, and I just thank you for these ordinances. That's all.
Thank you. Next, we have Tangi Lancaster.
Hi. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. We're on stolen land. My name is Tangi Lancaster. I am a resident of the neighboring town of Erie, and came this evening in support of an amazing community leader of El Paso versus Lafayette, who is a resident of Louisville. I am also in support of the six common sense gun ordinances, and hope that the town of Erie follows your lead. As the wife of a black man and mother of two black boys, and strong supporter of the Black Lives Matter movement, I was excited to hear your proclamation for Juneteenth earlier this evening. And I want to make it clear that intersectionality is ever-important. Some have brought up the Second Amendment this evening. I'm thinking that it might not be the best thing to hold on ever so strong to what a few white men wrote who owned other human beings who would be aghast to see this entire room filled of women and the women in elected positions right now, over 230 years ago. Yes, let's address the root, mental health issue. Let's talk about what many will not address, the infatuation with firearms and its proximity to white supremacy since the founding of this country on Turtle Island. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Corey Calvin Williams.
Hi there. Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi. Corey Williams, uh, resident of Louisville, and I just wanted to take a minute to thank you, Council, um, for your bravery and your courage and your openness tonight. This is a really hard topic. It's deeply personal for so many people. Um, so thank you. I grew up two hours from Uvalde, Texas, and I have good friends and family who still live there, friends, family who still live there. Um, it's, it's absolutely impossible to understand what they're going through, and no parent or family or community should have to go through that. I grew up in South Texas, uh, my family owns guns. Not a single ordinance that you're looking at passing tonight would influence any of their current behaviors. Um, and so, and they are responsible gun owners. So, um, these are common sense gun laws, um, and I just appreciate you all taking this into consideration to keep our community safe. I'm a mom to two young girls. Uh, my youngest will be entering the public school system this fall, and, um, it breaks my heart that they will have to, to sit through these, through these drills, um, and have to face this reality. So, anyway, thank you. Really appreciate you all and what you're doing tonight.
Thank you very much. I'm not seeing any other people in the queue. Were there any other people that didn't have a chance to speak that wanted to say something? Thank you all so much. And so that takes us back to council comments or motions. Councilmember Dickinson.
Um, yeah, before we get to the motions, I just want to make, um, one more comment around, um, we, we hear a lot, I, I've heard a lot, and we've heard some stuff tonight around, um, some of the other things, and it often comes in the form of, these, these ordinances or gun laws won't fix the problem. And instead, what we need to work on, and then there's a list of a bunch of things. And I think that, um, to steal from Councilmember Lay, yes, and we need better gun ordinance laws. But those things are real, that the mental health crisis in our country is real, and we also need to be doing things around that, and, you know, more, more funding for, um, for schools and for, I see our police chief in the back, for our police force to, to have more mental health experts, to have, um, more of those resources, to, you know, have parents who have the time and ability to spend with their kids, to educate them. Um, there are so many different, different things that we're doing wrong. And our laws are one of the, one of the things that we're doing wrong. But I think it's important, when you have conversations with really wonderful humans that are also really into guns, that you can listen to the parts that they are saying that are real, and I, I feel like I've had some really nice conversations, and I sort of end it with, "I agree with everything you just said, and I'm going to go pass some better laws tomorrow night." And so I, I, I am still listening, um, and, and this isn't, I'm so... There will be a mass shooting tomorrow, regardless of what we do tonight. That's horrifying. Little steps, little steps along the way, and, and, um, we're not going to read in the newspaper, uh, when an 18-year-old fails to buy a gun. That will not make the news. We won't know when someone didn't act because they just, it was too difficult to get a gun that day, and then something else happened in between. We're not going to know about it. It's not going to make news, and we're just going to have to look at the numbers over the years and hope that it gets better. Um, but there's going to be a lot of times where we don't, we don't know what the crisis we just averted. Um, so I have some faith that, that this will make a difference, and maybe there'll be one less shooting in the next several weeks and months and years, maybe it'll be 10 less, um, fewer. My wife would scold me. That's a good end.
Thank you, Councilmember Dickinson. Councilmember Fahy.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to add a couple more things that weren't mentioned. One, uh, one is the mental health issue that has been mentioned briefly, uh, but there was also a report from the American Academy of Pediatrics that states that states with waiting periods for buying a gun had 51% fewer firearm suicides, and 17% decrease in homicides by guns. And so just pausing between the time you initially want to buy the gun until you actually do greatly reduces the number of people who die from guns. Um, second thing is on the mental health issue. I want to first commend our police department. They already have someone who will go on these personal calls for domestic abuse and, and things where someone to talk to might prevent a crime, or a more serious crime. And relating to the Second Amendment, we are not trying to ban all guns, only assault weapons. And when the Second Amendment was put through, while they allowed guns, they were talking about muskets, and they still did not allow people to buy cannons. So we're not, we're not restricting access to guns, we're just limiting the type of gun, so that you can still go hunting, you can still protect yourself, you can still do all the self-defense things that you need to do, but maybe you can't go in and kill 100 people in a half hour. So I think that it's very important to pass all of these ordinances tonight because it's the first step, and we can continue adding more social workers in the police department, in the schools, doing whatever else we need to do. But this is the first step, and we can take that step tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember Fahy. Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. I really appreciate what Councilmember Fahy just said, especially about suicide. I think that what people often don't realize about gun violence in America is that the majority of gun deaths are suicides, and that people who live in homes with guns are much more likely to die by suicide. And so one of the, one of the, um, ordinances that we're taking up today is, is a really important ordinance, which is about posting signs at fire, at the location of firearm dealers to make sure that people understand the risks that they're taking when they're bringing a gun into, into their home. So it's a public health issue on many fronts, and, and I just want to thank Councilmember Fahy for her comments on that. With that, Mayor, I'd like to move that we approve ordinance number 1831, series 2020, and ordinance amending Title IX, Article VIII of the Louisville Municipal Code banning the sale and possession of assault weapons, large-capacity magazines, and rapid-fire-trigger activators, and establishing a minimum age to possess firearms with, and I'd like to include the second reading amendments as proposed by the city attorney.
Thank you, sir. Second.
Second.
Thank you. And just to be clear, I haven't closed the public hearing yet, so I'll let council members finish any discussion before I close the hearing, and then we'll go ahead and vote on the ordinance. Councilmember, um, no, I apologize, Mayor Protam Maloney.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, you know, first off, I, I again want to thank the public who provided comments. Um, I appreciated all points of perspective. You know, this is part of our open government, where we can take in information. It does influence us, um, and I appreciate everybody came out, out tonight. You know, to me, this is sensible laws to deal with senselessness. And, you know, other councillors have mentioned their lives have been affected by guns, might as well. Um, you know, and I think many of us have had situations in our lives, and, and so, you know, we're reacting to what we believe is, is best for public health, and, and in ways that we can, can view that through our own lives. But we have to be vigilant with this, and what, you know, Councilor Dickinson, um, you know, was talking about, you know, and I said this earlier, um, this may not be the perfect set of ordinances or laws, um, but it's a start. And, you know, it is deeper. As Councilor Fahy mentioned, our police, police department has been ahead of the curve in dealing with, um, you know, domestic situations, mental health and so forth, and has brought on additional resources. So, you know, I give our, our chief and our police department a lot of kudos for that because it's made a difference. And we, as a country, we, as a community, um, we need to continue that, we need to continue that energy. Mayor, I would just point out one thing, there are six ordinances. It might be, uh, nice if each of the councillors has an opportunity to make a motion to each of the ordinances. Thank you.
Thank you. That's a very nice idea. And I just, I do want to close the public hearing on all of them, so if council members have comments on any of the ordinances, um, make them at this point in time, please. Mayor, um, everyone's, everyone's getting promoted. We have a congressman, we have a mayor. Can I pick another one? Councilmember Most.
Um, anyway, I, I appreciate all the comments, um, again, from the community members, and also from my fellow councillors. I just, it feels really, um, good to me to be doing something about this scourge that makes us feel so helpless, and for us to be able to, as a community, to be, and as local elected officials, to really do something. I mean, all politics is local, and this is where we have to start, and I'm just proud to be part of this, um, group of elected officials. Um, and I just wanted, I know this is gruesome with the statistics, but I feel like it's really important to get this on the record, so I just want to add, because I think part of what, um, Councilmember Dickinson said about how this was planned before all this recent spate of killing- about how this was planned before all this recent spate of killings and even if, you know, in the 72 hours between the time that I believe our packet was issued for this meeting and Monday morning, um, there were 17 people killed and 70 people injured in 13 mass shootings. And so it just, you know, it's just this cascade of data that just any way you look at it is just horrible and that, you know, basically it's the number one cause of death of children, that we've had 246, probably today it's more than that, this is Monday, 246 mass shootings in two, in 157 days. And so the, we, we have a, an, uh, hu, an important responsibility as elected officials to do whatever is within our power to do, to try to make a difference on this, this issue that is just, um, essentially creating carnage in our country on a daily basis. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Lay?
And we have, do we have a second on that?
We do.
We do, okay. Uh, I was gonna make a friendly amendment to one of the whereas clauses. And I, I think what I would say is sort of a, I'd, I'd suggest this on each, each one. This is a fairly, uh, minor part of the, the ordinance, but I think it's important. The second one says whereas gun violence poses a grave public safety threat in the city of Louisville, et cetera. I guess I'd, uh, ask for a friendly amendment so that it read gun violence, um, poses a grave threat to public safety and public health. I think what we've heard tonight relates to both and...
Let me just read it back to you to make sure I got it. Gun violence poses a grave threat to public safety and public health?
In the city of Louisville, yeah, right.
And is that whereas clause on all six ordinances?
I think so. That was my last, when I went through them, we have similar language in all of them.
Thank you. And so we will, uh, the motioner, Councilmember Brown, accepts that as a friendly amendment. And seconder, I think, was Councilmember Dickinson. Is that acceptable?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other comment from folks this evening? I just wanna also thank the public for their participation. Um, we got a lot of feedback that, um, had an effect on our, our second reading amendments. And so the participation was invaluable and just hearing from everyone this evening was incredibly encouraging and supportive. So thank you all very much. Councilmember Lay?
Um, and I wanna amend my own.
Yes, sir.
Friendly amendment. I, I think I would actually add, uh, threat to, uh, public safety, public health, and public education.
Public safety, public health, and pub, okay. So now we will read...
Public education.
So it will now read whereas gun violence poses a grave threat to public safety, public health, and public education. Is the motioner accept the friendly amendment? Councilmember Brown does. Councilmember Dickinson, do you accept the friendly amendment?
Sure.
All right. Thank you. Are there any other comments this evening from councilmembers? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. And, um, with that, we have a motion on the floor to approve ordinance number 1831, series 2022, with our second reading amendments and with an amendment, uh, to the whereas clause that, uh, changes the second whereas clause to read whereas gun violence poses a grave threat to public safety, public health, and public education. Um, so City Clerk Muth, could we please have a roll call vote on the motion?
Councilmember Fahy?
Yes.
Councilmember Most?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Maloney?
Yes.
Councilmember Lay?
Yes.
Mayor Stolzmann?
Yes.
Councilmember Most, would you like to make a motion?
I would like to make a motion. I would like to make a motion to approve ordinance number 832, series 2022, and ordinance amending Title IX, Article VIII of the Louisville Municipal Code prohibiting the carrying of firearms in certain public places.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. There's a motion to approve ordinance number 1832, series 2020. And just clarifying, um, Councilmember Most, is that with the whereas clause added?
It's with the, yes, the friendly amendment and the where, the whereas clause.
Thank you. And Councilmember Fahy, was that...
Yes.
It looks like City Attorney Kelly has a comment.
Well, I do have a question. That whereas clause, um, Councilmember Lay is not in this ordinance. Did you want that entire where, whereas clause added as, um, revised in 1831? We can do that.
Uh, yes, please.
Great. So the, so the proposed amendment would be to approve ordinance number 1832 with any second reading amendments and to add a whereas clause that would state whereas gun violence poses a grave threat to public safety, public health, and public education. Is that your motion, Councilmember Most?
That is my motion.
And is that your understanding, Councilmember Fahy?
Yes.
Perfect. City, City Attorney Kelly, do we need to clarify anything else?
No, thank you.
Thank you very much. City Clerk Muth, could we please have a roll call vote on the motion?
Councilmember Most?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fahy?
Yes.
Mayor Stolzmann?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Maloney?
Yes.
Councilmember Lay?
Yes.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Maloney, would you like to make a motion?
Thank you, Mayor. I like this idea. I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance number 1833, series 2022, and ordinance amending Title IX, Article VIII of the Louisville Municipal Code prohibiting the open carrying of firearms in public places, um, and accepting the amendment asked, uh, adding the additional whereas clause proposed by Councilor Lay.
And just wanna verify before we get a second, City Attorney Kelly, are there any second reading amendments on this ordinance?
Uh, there are. There are second reading amendments on all of the ordinances.
On every single one.
And your, your motion tonight, since the second reading amendment version is what's before you for adoption, a motion to approve it does incorporate the second reading amendments.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Perfect. All right. So we have a properly moved ordinance. Is there a second?
I second.
Councilmember Most, seconds? Any confusion on the motion? Seeing none, City Clerk Muth, could we please have a roll call vote on the motion?
Mayor Protem Maloney?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Fahy?
Yes.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Yes.
Councilmember Lay?
Yes.
Councilmember Most?
Yes.
Mayor Stolzmann?
Yes.
Councilmember Lay, would you like to make a motion?
Um, just trying to bring it up. Bear with me for just a second. Okay. Um, I move for the passage of ordinance number 1834, series 2022, and ordinance amending Title IX, Article VIII of the Louisville Municipal Code to require all firearms dealers to post signs at all locations where firearm transfers take place. And to that, um, look at the, as, as amended, and then I think...
With the additional recital?
Yeah, I'm gonna say that, just include that, assuming that it is not.
We will do that. It is not.
Perfect. So there is a motion to approve ordinance number 1834 with the additional recital. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any confusion? Excellent. City Clerk Muth, could we please have a roll call vote on the motion?
Mayor Protem Maloney?
Yes.
Councilmember Most?
Yes.
Councilmember Fahy?
Yes.
Mayor Stolzmann?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Lay?
Yes.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Dickinson, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, um, I move that we pass ordinance number 1835, series 2022, and ordinance amending Title IX, Article VIII of the Louisville Municipal Code to require a waiting period prior to the sale of firearms. And I would add the whereas clause to this one as well.
Great. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any confusion from folks? Nope? All right. City Clerk Muth, could we please have a roll call vote on the motion?
Councilmember Most?
Yes.
Councilmember Fahy?
Yes.
Councilmember Lay?
Yes.
Mayor Stolzmann?
Yes.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Maloney?
Yes.
And Councilmember Fahy, would you like to make a motion?
Thank you, yes. I propose that we approve ordinance number 1836, series 2022, and ordinance amending Title IX, Article VIII of the Louisville Municipal Code to regulate the possession of unfinished frames and receivers and unserialized firearms.
And would you like...
With the amended, uh, whereas.
Perfect. And there's a second from Councilmember Lay. Everyone's clear on the motion? City Clerk Muth, could we please have a roll call vote on the motion?
Councilmember Fahy?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Maloney?
Yes.
Mayor Stolzmann?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Lay?
Yes.
Councilmember Most?
Yes.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. The motion carries. And so that'll take us to our next agenda topic, but I'm gonna just, um, we'll just take a five-minute recess, so if people wanna leave, they, they can. And the... I'm gonna give them, I'm gonna give the other two one minute in case it took, in case they heard me. Oh, here they come. So that takes us to our next agenda topic this evening. Next on our agenda is public comments on items that are not on our agenda and items that only appear on our consent agenda. Are there any members of the public that would care to comment on items that are not on our agenda or items that are only on our consent agenda? First, we have Aaron Davenport. Aaron?
Hi, Counsel. Uh, I hope you can hear me okay. Um, quick, quick question. Uh, first time engaging, I appreciate, um, uh, my councilmembers and the council for, for hearing me out, um, uh, earlier, but I was wondering why only video was available for those who were in person or on the, um, that were actually like, you know, the Mayor Protem, who was able to do video. Um, I felt a little bit disconnected in that I wasn't able to do video when I shared my piece. So, uh, something I'd like the council to consider going forward.
Thank you. Any other public comments on items that are not on our agenda? Seeing none. And just, um, as a reminder to folks, I'll make a council comment. Just, we take public comment on items that aren't on our agenda, but they're not on our agenda. Um, and so we only discuss things that are on our agenda at a council meeting, but we can certainly discuss things, um, with individuals who bring them up offline, or we can take them up at a future council meeting. So thank you very much for those comments. Next, that takes us to our consent agenda. Any comments on the consent agenda or motions from councilmembers? I move we approve the consent agenda. Mayor Protem Maloney, did you have a comment or a second?
I have a second and I have a comment, if I may.
Thank you, please do.
Um, you know, we often just quickly...
violence poses a grave public safety threat in the city of Louisville, et cetera. I guess I'd ask for a friendly amendment so that it read gun violence poses a grave threat to public safety and public health.
I think what we've heard tonight relates to both. Let me just read it back to you to make sure I got it. Gun violence poses a grave threat to public safety and public health?
That's acceptable.
And is that where as clause on all six ordinances?
I think so. That was my last, when I went through them, we have similar language in all of them.
Thank you. And so we will, the motioner, Councilmember Brown, accepts that as a friendly amendment, and seconder, I think, was Councilmember Dickinson. Is that acceptable?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other comment from folks this evening? I just want to also thank the public for their participation. We got a lot of feedback that had an effect on our second reading amendments, and so the participation was invaluable, and just hearing from everyone this evening was incredibly encouraging and supportive. So thank you all very much. Councilmember Lay?
And I want to amend my own.
Yes, sir.
Friendly amendment. I think I would actually add threat to public safety, public health, and public education.
And, okay, so now we will read.
Public education.
So it will now read whereas gun violence poses a grave threat to public safety, public health, and public education. Is the motioner accept the friendly amendment? Councilmember Brown does. Councilmember Dickinson, do you accept the friendly amendment?
Sure.
All right. Thank you. Are there any other comments this evening from councilmembers? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. And with that, we have a motion on the floor to approve Ordinance Number 1831, Series 2022, with our second reading amendments and with an amendment to the whereas clause that changes the second whereas clause to read whereas gun violence poses a grave threat to public safety, public health, and public education. So City Clerk Muth, could we please have a roll call vote on the motion?
Councilmember Fahy?
Yes.
Councilmember Most?
Yes.
Councilmember Fahy?
Yes.
Mayor Stolzmann?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Lay?
Yes.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Dickinson, would you like to make a motion?
Yes. I move that we pass Ordinance Number 1835, Series 2022, and Ordinance Amending Title IX, Article VIII of the Louisville Municipal Code to require all firearms dealers to post signs at all locations where firearm transfers take place. And to that, look at the, as amended, and then I think.
With the additional recital?
Yeah, I'm going to say that, just include that, assuming that it is not.
We will do that. It is not. Perfect. So there is a motion to approve Ordinance Number 1834 with the additional recital. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any confusion? Excellent. City Clerk Muth, could we please have a roll call vote on the motion?
Mayor Protem Maloney?
Yes.
Councilmember Most?
Yes.
Councilmember Fahy?
Yes.
Councilmember Lay?
Yes.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Dickinson, would you like to make a motion?
Thank you, yes. I propose that we approve Ordinance Number 1836, Series 2022, and Ordinance Amending Title IX, Article VIII of the Louisville Municipal Code to regulate the possession of unfinished frames and receivers and unserealized firearms.
And would you like?
With the amended whereas.
Perfect. And there's a second from Councilmember Lay. Everyone's clear on the motion? City Clerk Muth, could we please have a roll call vote on the motion?
Councilmember Fahy?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Maloney?
Yes.
Mayor Stolzmann?
Yes.
Councilmember Most?
Yes.
Councilmember Fahy?
Yes.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Lay?
Yes.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. The motion carries. And so that'll take us to our next agenda topic, but I'm going to just, we'll just take a five-minute recess, so if people want to leave, they can. Okay, you're going to tell.
Okay, you're going to tell.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
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 Okay.